Hold on, by the way. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the zoning board hearing. This is on June 8th. Tonight, we have three hearings. First, we'll get through the general business, which will be the minutes. This is the May 11th minutes. There's a motion by John to approve as issued. Second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. I'll pass that down to Melissa for dates and initials. All right. Let's dive right. So this is almost 7:05. By the time I finish reading this, we'll be ready to go. The applicants for the 7:05 hearing, Alexander Peetzer, please come on up to the front. If we need to put anything on the board over there, please do so. Do we have another microphone if we have to go to the board?
This one.
Okay, great. You'll have to pick one of those up, Attorney Bertinazzi. Go to this end, make sure the green's on. This is on the application of Alexander Peetzer, 10 Bandi Lane, Milford. Her variance from the setback requirements of the zoning bylaw in relation to a 12,408 square foot more or less possible land located on the west side of Bandi Lane, known and numbered as 10 Bandi Lane. The variance relief is sought to permit the maintenance of the existing shed located towards the front of the property, but in violation of the front and the side setbacks. With that, on the panel tonight would be the five main board members. And then, of course, we also have Dave and Chris here that will be part of the meeting as well. So with this, let me read and go through the application. Anybody that wants to be heard, everything needs to be directed through the chair. Direct questions or comments need to come through the chair and not directly to the attorney or the applicant. So if you have questions concerning that, please address everything through the chair. Okay? So with that, this is on the circumstances of questions that were asked to the applicant. This seems to be a little lengthy and notice, so we'll take this a little bit at a time. So according to the application, the applicant was issued a building permit in July of '22. The applicant is now seeking a variance in the minimum front yard requirements of 14.9 feet versus 30, and a minimum side yard requirement of one foot versus 15 feet. What circumstance? Now, the question becomes from the applicant, what circumstances exist in relation to the soil conditions, shape, topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district that would warrant the relief requested. Applicant states that the subject parcel is oddly shaped. There's a large lead outcropping on the southerly borderline directly adjacent to the accessory building, and a drainage ditched along the northerly boundary line. The backyard is too wet to support an accessory structure. Owing to these circumstances, relocating the accessory building on the lot would also require zoning relief. Concerning the question, if the variance was not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances described as the previous question? The applicant states that the applicant was reliant on a building permit that was issued, has expanded in excess of $29,000 on the installation of the accessory building and on landscaping, including a construction of a stone wall, the extension of the driveway, and the planting of a row of evergreens. The applicant would incur significant additional costs if required to move approximately $10,000 to $14,000 for the move. In addition, the applicant would lose the ability to have the accessory building on the property for storage. With that, the question also indicates state why you feel that the granting of the variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public and the good. The applicant states that the accessory buildings of the size and type installed by the applicant are permitted and in common with the neighborhood and the zoning districts in which the property is located. The accessory buildings and the supporting work, driveway, stone wall, and/or evergreen space and screening were professionally installed and aesthetically pleasing and improved the value and the visual appeal of the property. The accessory building, as it is called, does not negatively impact traffic nor create any issues, any other issues that would detrimentally affect to the public and the generality. With that, this was brought in front of the planning board on its meeting of May 16th, and the planning board has made an unfavorable recommendation. See town plan letter. And I'll paraphrase the letter. The applicant states that the applicant has requested front and side setback variances to allow the recently improperly constructed 12-by-20 detached accessory structure to remain in its current location, which violates both front yard and side yard setbacks. The building permit was issued in error, and the plot plan originally submitted was inaccurate and not to scale. The accessory structure is currently located 14.9 feet from the front property line, where 30 feet of front setback is required, and one foot from the side property line, one inch, I'm sorry, from the side property line, where 20 feet side setback is required. The 12-by-20 temporary structure is characterized on the building permit as being on no foundation and that the structure is movable. Relocating the structure and reducing the size would considerably lessen the encroachments into the required yards. The configuration of the existing lot is generally similar to others in the neighborhood. The subject property is substantially flat lot containing one single family dwelling. There exist no features to the current lot to differ from others in the neighborhood. Therefore, they recommend that an unfavorable report be sent off to the ZDA unless the structure is relocated or reduced in size to lessen the encroachment to the extent possible. So with that, board members in your package, you'll have, I believe, a certified plot plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're going to turn this over to Attorney Bertinazzi, who's representing the applicant. And if, do you have a copy of this?
I do.
Did you put it up there, or is it too small?
It's the same size as that.
All right. Well, why don't we do? Does anybody have a copy of this?
I see it.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want, we'll put it up here?
Sure.
Just make sure I have it back, because I'll have to sign that. Okay. With that, Dave, there's a letter in here. Do you want me to read this letter?
I don't know if it's up to you.
I'd love for you to read it, as the applicant.
Would you like me to read this letter into the record?
I would like to, yes.
Okay.
I read it, probably should read.
Let me read this into the record. So this was date, this is coming directly from the applicant. This is Alexander Peetzer, 10 Bandi Lane. This was written on April 4th. Dear zoning Board of Appeals, I moved into 10 Bandi Lane in 2020. In July 2022, I obtained a building permit number 22-dash-0751 to have a prefabricated accessory structure shed with no foundation put on my property for storage. The accessory structure has a limited economic lifespan. On January 24th, by the way, so July of 2022, the permit was obtained, and then on, let me see, on January 24th this year, I received a letter from the building commissioner to move the structure or obtain a variance to allow the structure to remain. The dimensions of the structure and plot plan rendering were included on the building permit application. The permit was issued for 7.5 feet on the sideline. I originally thought I had approximately 10 feet based on a straight line from the rear fence, Exhibit A in this package, for the front setback. I measured from the front corner of the structure to the road, which is 32 feet, on Exhibit B attached here, and the back corner of the shed ended up being slightly closer, 28 feet from the road, as it shifted slightly during installation concerning Exhibit C. But having the property surveyed in March of '23, it was determined that the shed is actually closer to the sideline than anticipated. Moving the structure is not viable because of the topography and the soil conditions. The structure cannot be turned because there is a large lead outcropping next to it, Exhibit D in this package, that would require significant excavation, according to the contractor, and could damage the foundation of the main house. The backyard is too wet for the structure for which I had to install a stone drainage trench and sump pump in an effort to mitigate, and these are Exhibits E and F attached. The structure cannot be moved to the right of the house because of the drainage trench. Moving the structure would also necessitate a variance. I have spent over $29,000 on this project, which all receipts can be provided, and taking down and moving the structure would result in a significant financial hardship. To take down the structure would be a net loss of approximately $18,000. Moving the structure would result in additional costs of approximately $10,000 to $14,000, plus sunken costs of work already completed. Existing project cost breakdown can be found on Exhibit G attached. Steps taken. There's a row of evergreens along the lot line behind the shed that once grown will substantially limit view from the neighboring property. The shed is also under a large maple tree that provides coverage and season, see Exhibit A. And lastly, I have offered to put up a fence along the sideline and front portion, but natural evergreens are more appealing. The shed and supporting work that are aesthetically pleasing and improve the visual appeal of the property, as evidenced by multiple signatures obtained from residents on the street, see Exhibit H. In summary, I've attempted to do everything consistent with the spirit of the permit issued and in good faith. The project was completed last year, and I am requesting the ZDA grant the variance based on the topography of circumstances, significant financial hardship it would take, and to move the shed in light of all other variances that have been recently granted in the immediate area. So with that, that was signed by Alex Peetzer. So with that, Attorney Bertinazzi, you may enlighten us further.
So this is Alex Peetzer right here with me. He's the owner of the property. He's located in 10 Bandi Lane, situated in the single-family residential or RB zoning district. This is a really unusual circumstance. So I think the history is important. At some point in time, over a year ago, Mr. Peetzer decided that he wanted an accessory building, a storage shed, if you will, for the storage of lawn equipment, lawn tools, lawn furniture, bags of grass, bags of fertilizer, all of that. But he also has a hobby car, a Ford Mustang, that he uses during the warm weather, but in the winter months is off-road and unregistered. And so he was looking to have an accessory building in which, during the times when the vehicle is off-road, he could put it away out of sight so he doesn't have a registered, unregistered vehicle sitting in his driveway. So having determined that that's what he was looking to do, he started considering the circumstances affecting his property to determine where best to situate this outbuilding. As is stated in the application, the rear of the property is excessively wet. There are significant periods of time during the year where there is water in the backyard, sometimes penetrating into the home. I understand that's fairly common up in that area since they've reconfigured Highland Street a number of years ago. To try to address that, there was sort of a drainage system that was installed along the right side of the home, as you face it from Bandi Street. In addition, there's a rock or ledge outcropping on the left-hand side of the home. So considering all that, he determined that sort of in the front into the left-hand side of the home was the best place to situate that. There's also sort of, the lot is also sort of oddly shaped. It's on a curvature of the road, so the front boundary line is curved, such that the front yard of the property is wider directly in the front, but narrow significantly as you move to the side yard. So considering all of this, he ended up choosing the location where the outbuilding is presently situated. He started looking to what he needed to do to bring the project into fruition. He contacted the town. He came to the town. He sought and obtained a building permit to construct the building substantially where it's located, and then went to work to do that. Hired professionals to create a pad to situate the building on, to situate the building there, to reconfigure his driveway, to install a low retaining wall, and then to button it all up with the landscaping, to bring it all back together. And he did all of this at a cost of almost $30,000 to himself. He closed out all of his permits. He believed that he had done everything properly, everything that he was supposed to do, and that he now had his desired outbuilding to use. And then, six months later, was contacted by the town, informed that the building permit should in fact not have been issued, and that he would either need to raise the structure or he would have to move the structure or seek zoning relief in order to retain the structure in its present location, which brings us before you. So in an effort to try to retain the building in its current location, he has submitted the petition that's before you. He is seeking a variance of the minimum front yard and the minimum side yard requirements of Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw. With respect to the front yard requirement in this zoning district, the front yard requirement is 30 feet. If you look carefully at the plan, it appears that the engineer is measuring that distance of 14.9, not from the paved surface of the roadway, but from the sort of 10-foot right-of-way that the town maintains. So the plan shows 14.9 feet to that back corner of the accessory building, when in fact, there is, I believe, 24.9 feet that is there to the actual paved surface of the road.
On that plan?
Correct.
Because I can't see it. I gave it you. Can you provide that just real quick?
Sure.
Because I know on the other plot plan, they mistakenly put 30 feet and 10 feet, and that's not even a plot plan.
Right. And that was something that Mr. Peetzer did, but if you look at that, when he submitted it to the town, he measured 30 feet from the front portion, so you can see that it's not 30 feet from the back portion, and the 10 feet was based on different things.
And 41 feet to the corner of the house on the circle.
Correct. 30 feet to the road, to the corner of the shed.
To the front corner of the shed is what?
Well, to the left corner of the shed, it's 14.9.
Correct.
Right.
But again, if you look at that...
Right corner, it's not marked.
Right. But if you look at that...
You've got to scale it.
That's 14.9 to the right-of-way, not to the paved surface. So there's another 10 feet to the paved surface.
That's correct. Yep.
So really, there is 24.9 feet there.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
With respect to the side yard line, again, Mr. Peetzer had sort of tried to determine that based on the location of fences.
Right.
May have determined incorrectly, and then again, during the installation, things sort of shifted a little. There's less than a foot there versus 15 feet that is required by the bylaw.
Okay.
So as I stated in the sort of presentation of history, there are unique circumstances that affect this property that do not generally affect those in the zoning district. Again, there's the shape of the lot. There's this curvature along the front lot line, so that there's a wider front yard directly in front of the house, as opposed to the sides as you approach the side boundary lines. So that narrows the sort of envelope, the building envelope, for installing a structure to the front inside of the home. In addition, we have the situation with the excessive wetness in the backyard. We have the drainage system on one side. We have the outcropping on the other, such that literal enforcement of the bylaw would cause hardship. It would prevent Mr. Peetzer from using his property as he would like. It would prevent him from having this extra storage that he needs. In addition, there is the financial impact. Again, he's $29,000 plus into this project already. In order to raise the structure, he's estimating another $10,000 to $14,000, you know, plus the loss of everything that he's done to move it. If that would be possible, in light of all of these circumstances affecting his property, you know, it's probably more than that. These structures are permitted and common in the zoning district. This is professionally installed. It's aesthetically pleasing. It matches the aesthetics of the home and looks appropriate. Certainly would have no negative impact on values within the neighborhood, has certainly no impact on traffic, would do nothing to impair pedestrian safety. There is a petition that was submitted from a number of the abutting neighbors. There's a couple of here as well tonight in support of the petition. With that said, unless Mr. Peetzer has anything to add, we're happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Wonderful. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to board members if they have any question, and then at that point, we'll turn it over to the public. There's a couple of letters here of neighbors, one or two, some additional pictures, and there is a, in the folder, there's also a litany of people that had signed a petition in favor of granting this. It looks like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 of the resident, local residents. So I'll save the time from reading those, because I don't think that would be necessary. So I just have one quick question. All the outside drainage work, when was that done? This year or last year?
It was done, well, 2000, the year prior to last year, so two...
So before the shed was installed?
Yes.
Right.
All of that stuff was done before the shed?
Right. When I moved in, I was experiencing significant...
Water, it's a high water table over there.
Right, right. And one thing to point out, since I moved in in 2020, I've tried to do everything to bring this house up and improve the house to the standards that the town would want. For example, the sewer lines were open, and that's where all the groundwater was draining. So I had the sewer department come over. They inspected it. They told me to cut the piping out and drain it to the road. So I went through that whole project. The electrical outside service wasn't up to code, so I had all that replaced. The oil tank and the electrical heat downstairs were safety and environmental hazards. I had all that replaced. So I've taken a number of steps to try to improve the livability of this house and bring it up to the standards that the town would want and make it more fuel in the neighborhood and for future owners potentially.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Chris, you have any questions? I'll start down there.
I do not.
Okay. Bobby?
Yeah, the row of, looks like arborvitae's behind the shed, those are on the neighboring property?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you were putting more arborvitae's up, or...
Well, I mean, he's happy, you know, he's happy to do what needs to be done to, you know, to make his neighbors happy.
I've offered to put fences, plant more arborvitae's along the front to make it, I guess, more hidden from the front of the road.
And he remains happy to do that.
Yeah, I want to make a comment before we go any further, because this is difficult for everybody, specifically when someone makes a big effort to do the right thing in the right intention of pulling a permit. And we know that, and we've seen it here as board members and also the building department sees it in many violations in the building department, that people just decide to do stuff without permits. And then they pay dearly afterwards. And then you have the residents in this community that try to do the right thing, and then for some reason, it gets screwed up. So we're in one of those situations tonight, where the resident did everything he could and tried to do the right thing, and then circumstances hit. From the building department, again, a mistake was made, you know, the shed being quote-unquote "movable" versus permanent, that has changed. So there's a substantial amount of issues that have gone from this since last July. A lot of that really started with him already having problems with water and drainage. So he was already doing all of that. The shed was probably one of the most simplest things you can do, go buy it, put it on the property, and let's move on. But the plan he had was wrong, which was a mistake. The building department didn't know that. So that's why the building department in January finally realized it and then revoked it. So how do you revoke something that is so large? It's difficult to do. And that's what forced him down the road to now spend more money to get an engineer so that he can come in front of this board to try and correct the mistakes that have happened. So I wanted to bring that up because it happens a lot, but more importantly, try to do the right thing all the way from start to finish. And mistakes happen both on the town's part and on the applicant's part. So I want to just bring that up to date, so everybody's kind of aware of it.
So the original plot plan that was submitted to the planning board or the building department was not an engineered plot plan?
It was a mortgage...
It was a mortgage plan.
That Mr. Peetzer sort of...
I also, I went down...
But if you look at it, he went to the building department, and, you know, it's measured 30 feet from the front portion of the building, which is not the closest port to the road, and then it shows 10 feet behind, and the minimum side yard is 15 feet. So I don't know how, I don't know how that permit issued based on that drawing.
In regards to the permit, I'd like to add, when I say I tried to do everything by the book, I gave the manufactured building sheet from the shed manufacturer of what the dimensions of the building were. I spelled out the dimensions in multiple places that it was 12-by-20 on the permit itself, and I tried to draw out exactly where the intent of the shed was to go on the property and what the plan was. I tried to convey...
And the benefit of what he's done tonight is also provide copies of those permits.
Correct.
So that he provides the board with everything that we need versus trying to go down and try and figure out what was going on.
And if you look at the plan that's attached to that, again, the 30 feet is measured from the front part of the building. It's clear from the plan. Again, I don't know how this issued. It shows 10 feet to the side, and it's 15 feet, so I don't...
And again, the plan that was used is a mortgage inspection plot plan, which is a bank plot plan that they do. Some people will try to get away with using this as an engineered plan, but you can't really rely on this. But most people don't know that. So unless you're in the business, people really don't know that, and that's how mistakes happen. So the building department went by this based on what was supplied with the help of, and I don't know who drew this in here...
Me, when I applied for the permit.
But that was drafted in, so the building department assumed that he provided the setbacks that were proper. And then, when the more investigation was done, and the shed's already on the property, it's already acquired, and that's when everything changed. So again, trying to do the right thing and trying to be honest about it, and now he's sitting here faced with this dilemma, and he right now has a revoked, a revoked permit. So me personally, I want to say thank you for spending the time to get ahead of this, number one, but number two, I feel for what you've gone through. Nobody should have to go through this. And there were mistakes happened along the way, and, you know, it's nice to see that people admit that they have mistakes and don't lie about it. So those are the comments that I just wanted to make as we move forward. But go ahead, Bob. Any other questions?
Well, I mean, shouldn't the town have some kind of...
I think it's pretty simple, though.
Some kind of apologies or something?
Applied for a permit, six months later, so you can't have it. It's the town's fault.
I think that'll come.
You know, it's the town's fault that he shouldn't be penalized for.
Right.
Simple.
Anybody else?
Nope.
John?
Not yet, not at this time.
John?
Yeah. I agree with a lot of the things you said, Mr. Chairman. I would say 95% of the people who come before this board do it with good intention. They follow the rules, they pull the permits. In most cases, that's true. If I was this applicant and I was going to put a shed up on my property, I'd apply for the permit, permit's granted, and the case, I put up my shed. Now, I've visited the area, the neighborhood. I looked at the applicant's home. It certainly is tastefully done, not just the shed, but the property itself is kept up very well. It's unfortunate that it does violate some of the plot lines, but again, I would question a lot of hardships that come before this board. People come with the intention of saying that it would be a hardship for them if their variance wasn't granted. In my time on this board, this is probably the most obvious hardship that I have seen. If it was a property that was not kept up, wasn't tastefully done, a building that was put up that was shabby, that would be a whole different thought for me. But seeing what I saw, this is just an unfortunate mistake. I believe there was no deception involved in this. I believe there, there was no deception involved in this. Everything was done correctly, permits are here, evidenced, costs of, of all of the work done at the home has been provided to us. So as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is the most thorough application that I've seen come across this desk. So that's basically how I feel, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dave.
No, um, I, I, no, Bob, just.
Okay, I'm, before, I'm going to turn it over to anybody who wants to speak in the, in the audience. So when you get up, please state your name. I have, and I don't know if you want me to read this, or someone wants to read this. I have a letter here, the opposition, would someone like me to read this?
I can read it.
Okay. Why don't you come up, grab a microphone? Come on over, we just want you on the microphone, that's all. So is that the only copy we have on this? Okay.
My name is Kelly Baca. I live at 11 Bandi Lane, which is directly across the street.
11?
11, directly across the street from Mr. Pisha at Den, at 10 Bandi Lane. I want to dispel some of the mystery around this, that it does seem like a very innocent mistake, but it was a very pre-planned innocent mistake. So in addition to my letter, I have some other comments to address some of the things that you've said here tonight as well. To this honorable board, as the owners of the property across the street from Mr. Alexander Pisha of 10 Bandi Lane, we oppose the approval of the proposed variance dated April 4th, 2023 regarding a front yard shed at said address for the following reasons of fact. Mr. Pisha had applied for this building permit with the information we know to be misrepresented to the Town of Milford Building Inspector Division as follows. The original application states that the setbacks for the shed, it's a garage, by the way, are required, are required 15 feet from the front of the property with 30 feet provided and seven and a half feet required for the side variance, for the side allowances, and 10 feet provided. In zoning section RB, which you referred to earlier today, where our neighborhood is located, the requirements are 15 and 30 feet respectively.
That's correct.
Right?
Yep.
As acknowledged by the building inspector's violation that he issued in January of this year. The shed is actually 240 square feet, not under 200 as required for the setbacks that he listed on his application. He listed the size of the shed on the application. He knew when he filled out the application the information was incorrect. The original application provides the brief description of the proposed work to be an accessory building, these are his words, looking to have a prefabricated accessory structure, 12 by 20 shed with a door put on the lot, for the use of extra storage, yard equipment, et cetera. No foundation, structure is movable. If you look carefully at the actions and work of Mr. Pisha has done, as outlined in his cost analysis submitted with his variance application, he has paved the structure in, done permanent masonry of surrounding the building, and installed an underground electrical connection, which, in my opinion, shows his intent is not a temporary structure that is movable. By the way, when Mr. Pisha applied for his permit, he, he staked out the footprint of the shed that he was putting out. And I cannot tell you how many times he moved those stakes with string, tweaked them, moved them, tweaked them, moved them after he was issued the permit. There is not an indication that electrical work will be necessary for the project as this area in section four of the application is left blank. On September 21st, 2022, the Town of Milford issued Mr. Pisha an electrical permit for a new garage detached. He applied for a shed with an underground conduit supplying the shed with electricity for its overhead door and lighting. Overhead door. His application says one door, he has two. He also has a four-foot loft. The permit was granted without the town's certificate of zoning compliance. My understanding is that your bylaws say if you do not have a certificate of zoning compliance, you cannot use that particular structure until it's been granted. He had a car in there since last fall, and he still continues to use it that way. The application requires plans for a structure, which you asked about earlier. Mr. Pisha submitted a spec sheet for the shed that does not in any way reflect the actual shed installed on the property. The bill of sale that accompanies the plans that he supposedly had done for the property in both the variance application and the original permit application, Mr. Pisha ordered his, or actually ordered a customized shed with two doors, overhead and a three-foot traditional door, a four-foot loft, an eight-foot pressure-treated ramp, a fireproof pressure-treated floor. His intended use of this shed was as a garage, which he's been saying since he moved in, he's been trying to figure out how to add a garage to the building. As neighbors, we were friendly before this happened, we suggested he put an addition on it, something facing the street. On the opposite side, he now has drainage, he could put in footings on the other side now that he has drainings. He, the story kept changing. Every time I talked to him, it was a different story. The Milford Building Department, when they issued the permit, if they drove by the property, would have seen that he had staked out the footprint for this structure, and they would have seen that it was too close to the Fernares' property. Those arborvitae that he planted, not professionally, with his father, are, most of them are dead, and they're in her yard. He never asked permission for, as far as I know, never asked permission to do that. The Milford Building Department has admitted to me that they made a mistake in granting him the permit, that the application was not properly reviewed, that the electrical permit was not vetted. If you look at the electrical permit, you can see that it was not vetted. He didn't even have a certificate of compliance yet, so I'm not sure why he was issued an electrical permit. And that they were not aware that there was a shed in Mr. Pisha's front yard, until they received phone calls from the neighbors in the spring. In fact, I had called and inquired about the shed in late August, prior to the electrical installation. If Mr. Pisha was, has spent upwards of $30,000 with the town's permission, no inspection, no oversight, there should be no allowance of the variance due to the irreparable harm it causes to the property and value of my home and other abudders. I have supplied a photo of the frontage of my property, a view from the front of my home. His view is much better than mine. I have a view of a 20-foot whitewashed wall. I walk out my front door and I see a 20-foot whitewashed wall with a little tiny window in the middle. I didn't even know until yesterday, there's actually a pretty side to the shed that nobody gets to see. I have a big white wall. It was once like a little meadow between the two yards before he planted the trees and started all of this. Now it's just a bland, stark, white, dreadful view of the side garage. I've consulted with a real estate professional who estimates that the resale value of my home across the street could be affected by as much as 25% because of the illegal garage that we now are fronting.
I don't think so.
I don't know. He's put 30,000 into his, I put 2, 300,000 into my.
I have a letter from an appraiser that says it hasn't.
Am I allowed to finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Pisha's garage is not facing the street, and it is now a great conversation piece for anyone who visits my home. Allowing this variance would give him the green light and give others the green light to do the same thing in their own home. Mr. Pisha has committed an act of deception. We have a friendly neighborhood relationship prior to this project. He mentioned, since he moved in, that he wanted a second garage space for a second car. This is not what he described. When he did call me to discuss this, by the way, I was never asked to sign that thing, and we were friendly before this happened, he never came over my house to ask me to sign his petition. He called me on the phone.
I knocked on your door.
When we did it, when he did call me to discuss the variance, he was surprised at my opposition and went on to change his story a few times with each question that I asked him. He did not take anyone else's property value into consideration. He did not consider the blight that the building causes to us from across the street or anyone down, driving down Bandi Lane. And it's very clear to me that he was looking to ask for forgiveness after he had this project finished. We do enjoy having him as a neighbor, I can't think of worse people to live near. One, no one's trying to spoil his good time or take away his hobby, but it seems like his investment was exacerbated by the lack of oversight by the Town of Milford. I don't feel like that should be, that we all have to pay the price for going ahead with a project that was not inspected, that was not vetted, that, I mean, I spoke to the building inspector and was shocked to find that he's an inch from the property line. The building doesn't move a little bit. Everybody keeps saying the building moved a little bit. You're talking 25 feet, the building moved 25 feet. When they first installed it, we saw him in the driveway trying to put the car in the garage. If he moves it over, he won't be able to get his car in the garage. Sometimes you just don't buy the right property for what you want to do. It's in odd shape, you should be able to do whatever you want, I understand that. My suggestion, put some footings in, put it on the other side of the house, put it in the backyard. It doesn't belong in the front yard right on the street. We, it, it just doesn't belong there. It's not that type of neighborhood. Rural, go ahead, put it on the street, whatever. But, you know, if you need a second garage, maybe this just wasn't the house for you. So that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anybody else care to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Come on up.
Hi. Um, so.
Your name?
My name's Julia Fenari.
Hi, Julia, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm here with my husband Pete, and we live at 8 Bandi Lane, so we are Alex's neighbors. We've been in our.
Next door, right next door?
Right next door.
Okay. What side are you on?
Um, if you're facing the street, we are to his right.
To his right, mm-hmm.
We have been residents in that home since 2003. We're here tonight to strongly oppose the variance that's been applied for. Alex approached my husband back in July of 2022 and stated that he was going to place a shed in the front lawn, at which time my husband told him he didn't think it was a good idea and that it wouldn't look proper. However, Alex said to my husband that it would be a mobile structure and it can be moved at any time if need be. Once said shed arrived, it was a prefabricated 12-foot by 20-foot, 200-square-foot garage featuring an overhead, side door, loft, two windows, is now paved in, has electricity that runs to it. The, the size of the structure, by the zoning bylaws, must be 15 feet from my property line and 30 feet from the street, as we've all reviewed. This structure is actually within less than one foot of my property, and less than 13 feet from the street. The measurements that were confirmed by the Milford Building Inspector, John Erickson. This immobile structure ends in violation of the town bylaws and has been the home of one of two of Mr. Pisha's cars that he owned since August of 2022. Unfortunately, this prefabricated 240-square-foot garage that's supposed to be a shed, and again, is within one foot of my property, not 10, not 15, one foot, is a tremendous eyesore that has now greatly affected the value of my home due to its location. A home that I'm sure, like many of you, is a tremendous investment and what I work, what we work truly hard for. It affects the property value of the surrounding homes. These zoning bylaws are in place to preserve the appearance of a neighborhood, our neighborhood. What was once a comfortable, small community atmosphere is now very uncomfortable for us. The garage has made things awkward in the neighborhood, a feeling that could have been avoided should the building apartment inspector project inspected it when I called to ask about it. And I had called several times once it was placed, when we saw Alex. I also want to add that the trees that are placed there are also on my property, and we want those removed as well. We again stress, we strongly oppose the granting of the variance of the garage at 10 Bandi Lane. No one should have to have their homes affected by this as much as this is affecting our home and its value and the effect that it has on the visitors and the neighbors. We are the next door, we are directly there, and he's less than a foot from our property. And when he said, he never said it would be that close to our, our property line at all. Thank you.
How long, how long have the arborvitae been up?
Two years.
Two years.
So you were aware that those were in?
Yep.
Did you know, did you know that that was not your, that was your property or not?
So when Alex approached us, he said, do you mind if I put some bushes in? They're going to be on my property, I'm going to take care of them, and he put them in. They're not on his property, but we were like, that's fine, let's all just, we're not like that. We're like, you want them, you can keep them, you take care of them. They're dead, they're not on his property, they're on my property, and now they're dead.
By quite a bit.
Yeah, by a lot.
Okay.
We're not aware of that.
We are now. We are now. Okay. All right, anybody else care to be heard? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Axel Millian, 2 Bandi Lane, been, been on Bandi for two years, love my neighborhood, love my neighbors, kind of feel weird being here, but I met Alex. I met Alex because he's always outside working on his, working on his yard, keeping everything spic and span, and I'm always walking by, and he's just a friendly guy waving, so got to get to know Alex. Saw the thing in the mail about this, asked him what's, what's going on, and just figured I'd come and say, you know, as a neighbor, I think, I think, you know, the shed looks great, it's aesthetically pleasing, it matches his house. When I drive by, it's like, wow, that's nice. And there's no second thought that goes to it, just good for him. And like I said, he's always outside working on his house, and as a neighbor, seeing that, it inspires me to want to keep up and keep my yard looking clean. I was out there mowing yesterday at 7:00 PM because I knew I'd be here today, I'm traveling tomorrow. And I think that's, he brings out the best in me and the neighborhood, and I think he had good intentions, and I think it looks great, and he inspires me to keep our neighborhood up to a high standard, and that's kind of all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Anybody else care to be heard?
Cody, 13 Bandi Lane.
13?
I work kind of on a corner, so I also live directly across the street from him, from Alex. I disagree that the shed is in any way an eyesore. Honestly, driving by, it's close enough to his garage, you, I don't really take a second glance at it. I second what he's been saying, that Alex has done nothing but fix his house, his lawn, everything since he's moved in. It seems like a mistake was made, that sucks. Also, the, the gravel pad that the garage was sitting on was installed weeks before this actual garage was installed. So I think that was the time to maybe say something about it, not after the $30,000 has been spent and the house has been put up. But, yeah, that's all I've got.
Sure, Sam. Yeah, I'm already on that. So I want to, I want to just pass this down because I try to be as knowledgeable as I can when we go down the road of variances if, if something comes in, so.
Can I have the appraisal that Mr. Burton, I think, gave?
Sure. So, so this is a similar piece of property, and I actually pulled up to see if this property here, it, it, it's located in Milford, and on the right-hand side is the exact same shed. And when I pulled up the permit and I pulled up the application, clearly, it's, it's assigned as a shed. A shed can have an overhead door. When I built my house, I made it, I got a permit, I put it to proper setbacks in the backyard, and I made sure that I had an overhead garage door. So if I wanted to put a heavy piece of equipment in there, I could. I don't think he was trying to deceive anybody, but when you see a garage door in a shed, everybody thinks it's another garage. Now, whether or not there's concrete there now or not, I don't know. But I, I, I think we can get through this, but there's got to be some cooperation on both sides because I, I, I just, I think the arborvitae situation that's on the wrong lot needs to be taken care of right away, and that's a commitment that should happen within days. And, and that should be brought back to its natural state. I think the, the seed should be planted, and I think grass needs to grow there and make sure that that gets germinated. And the other aspects concerning the eyesore of looking at it from across the street, if you drive down neighborhoods that people have two-car garages that are side entries, this is what you, this is what you see. You see a garage on the property sideways. Two-car garages on a side-load entry will have a window or two in the front. If it makes it any better to put an additional window on this to make it look nicer, but my other suggestion would be I would be considering putting some elevated loom shrubs in the front and putting an arborvitae there on top of that. So if you elevate two or three feet of nice loom all along the front of this particular posse or this particular garage, it clearly becomes even more aesthetically pleasing. So I'm just bringing this up as a matter of discussion or as a matter of stuff to stink through, to try and make sure that everybody wants to try to do the right thing and no one's going to be sitting there trying to shove anything down their line. Were there mistakes made? Yes, there was, it clearly was. The building department was the first one. As far as the electrical stuff and the electrical permit stuff, if, if that hasn't been signed off, that, that certainly can be corrected.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Let me finish. It's, it's similar of a homeowner taking and changing out his sink and then plumbing it without a permit. You're supposed to have a permit from a plumber to do that, but do most people do that? to do that, but do most people do that? No. They do it themselves to save money. So, you know, we, we get the challenges from all the mistakes that people make. As John indicated before, I've seen variances come into this, this particular meeting room, and people outright lie, and they try to get away with it, and then they get caught. So, this is not the case of that. It appears to me that this is a wonderful neighborhood, and people are upset on what happened. And was it done the right way? Probably not. Were mistakes happening? Yes. But we can get through them if everybody wants to. So, those are the comments I just want to make. If other people want to make a couple more comments, or board members-
What was the site plan?
The site plan?
I've got one question. One of the neighbors said she called the building department seven times, and they never got back to you?
I had to call a couple of times. I left a couple of messages, and then I finally got back to them. They finally got back to me. Then they said they'd have somebody come out and look at it. Then I called back. They said, "Oh, yeah, we'll have somebody go out and look at it." Then she pulled the permit and said, "Oh, wow, that's very large. I'm gonna have somebody go out and look at it." Then I called back the next day, and she said, "Yeah, that's not within code and it needs to be moved."
This all took place over six months when everything was wrong by the town. The town issued a permit, allowed them to build it, which he did. You called several times. He still didn't respond. I can't blame him. I can only blame the town.
I, I understand that, but, but I shouldn't, my property-
Now, how do we fix it?
It shouldn't be as, that close to my property line, and I shouldn't have to, that shouldn't affect me because of what the town did as well. And it does affect the resale of my home. Who wants something that's right there when they're going to, that it, it, I shouldn't have to suffer, my husband and I shouldn't have to suffer for that either. That's my investment, my home. That's my largest investment that I have. So, which will greatly be more than $30,000 that I will lose.
I can attest to that because that's not my field. However-
I understand that, but-
However-
I submitted a letter from a, a licensed appraiser that says it doesn't impact the value.
Why don't you hand this to them and let them both read that?
So the question is, like Mr. Chairman said, how do we make everybody happy with this, to some degree? Not everybody's gonna be happy. Just make no mistake about that.
These are, these have come before us before, and it's just the zoning. We would, we would grant it with stipulations, like he-
Says it's not gonna have negative impact on the buddy homes.
He's done everything he has to do.
Which he has tried to do with the Erevitees, and he's, he has stated at the beginning that he's willing to, to work with people, the neighbors, to try to figure out the best way to get this moving forward.
In my opinion, the fourth line is the problem.
We've granted these for, a lot, for sheds or, or garages or whatever, without that setback. That's why you come here to the zoning board. The electrical problems that you guys were encountering, and he has electricity out there, that's not on us. We can't do anything about that. We're here for zoning. You gotta talk to the electrical, the building commissioner and whatnot.
Right, the whole point of it, he's saying on the application, sorry, but it's-
I think the electrician is here.
On the original application where it says electrical, if you actually look through the application, he left that blank. The electrical was an afterthought.
But again-
But the electrical's not part of our-
Not part of it. It's our jurisdiction.
You have to understand the intent to begin with. He, he needed it put there, but, you know, like, he, I get what you're saying, and definitely we have to work through something. The question I had before for you is, yes, a, a two-car garage on the side is great. I haven't seen any garages in Milford that have a front-facing and a side-facing garage quite like that, that's quite unique, and it's the first thing you see when you turn on from westbound.
We're gonna try and make this a little bit better.
Can I, can I raise a point about the, the electrical as well? We pulled a trench permit for, for the electrical. There was two electrical permits pulled by, by a licensed, uh, electrician. His name is James McCormick, and, and I thought he, I thought he was gonna be here tonight. We did everything by the book. It was inspected by Mr. Mancini, who also came by the property, inspected the rough-in and the trench, so there was two inspections done, but regardless of the electrical. It's a one-inch electrical conduit with one electrical line in it.
When did, what was the date of the power just for-
September 24th.
Of last year.
So, I wanted, and I wanted to put a light bulb in, in the shed, so I could see and have a light bulb in it. That was the intent. And then I decided to put the door opener in after the fact, and so that, long story short, this can easily be removed if that is something that is, is, is an issue.
So my question is, is this a concrete floor or wood floor?
It's wood.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And it's on, it's not on concrete underneath either.
No, no, it's on stone.
It's on stone, and it's got a wood floor.
So, six-by-sixes?
Four-by-fours, I believe, uh, running, running a long way on the-
Those are four-by-fours? Okay. I think they're probably six-by-sixes. I saw it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's a prefab. It's a prefab.
Four-by-fours would be pretty weak for that.
Okay, so, so, and again, I need to have you answer the question or address the question is, is one feet, can you move that two or three or four or five feet over? That's probably what, that's why they, they said one foot, or one inch.
I, I, is that a question to, to me?
I'm just bringing it up, yeah.
It would cause a significant financial hardship. If I was to try to move this, excavating that ledge outcropping has been estimated to be, could be four-
He's talking about sliding it forward.
Towards the house.
Towards the house.
Sliding it this way.
It, it, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be usable. It would be even more unsightly, and it would be a, a, an astronomical financial hardship to do that.
Just so that we're, and I want to, listen, we're trying to work through this-
Yes.
But I want you to understand is, the, the permit was revoked. Was revoked. We need to get through this, um, and we're trying to get through this. So, what happens if this shed goes away when you decide to sell?
What happens if this shed goes away when I decide?
To sell.
Well-
I'm just bringing up that question.
Hypothetically, wouldn't, wouldn't the shed stay if, if I-
Anything, any, this is a, this is a, you're requesting a variance. What we try to do is work with everybody, and then sometimes we put conditions on those variances. You're requesting a frontage variance, and you're requesting a side variance, and you've got two direct abutters, front and side, specifically one that's majorly impact right to the line. So I'm asking you, will you help that, is what I'm asking? Because that's what they're asking, per se. So you don't want to sit there and try and shove it down a neighbor's throat if you can't try to work it out together. And that's all we're trying to do here. We want everybody to be happy, but a little bit, everybody's gotta give. So we're just trying to methodically go through that, and that's why we're talking about it. You know what I mean?
I, I'd be happy to, as far as some of the recommendations you had pointed out, you know, moving the Erevitees, I'd be happy to move the Erevitees, potentially installing a second window, uh, more Erevitees in, in, in the front of it. I, I, I do think that sliding the structure forward based on, again, the ledge outcropping, I, I, I don't think it, I think it might be not-
No, I'm not saying forward. I'm saying-
Into the driveway, Alex.
A little bit more into the driveway.
In, into, towards-
Sliding it a little bit to the driveway, to keep it away from the line that you're encroaching on by more than 15 feet.
I, I understand. I guess my question to, to the board and to the neighbors is, is, will that really make an impact on, on what it, on what it looks like? As moving this two feet, it's still gonna look-
You've got two neighbors that you, you're, you've got a direct abutter that, that is having a tough time. I'm just trying to get you through it.
I, I'm, I guess I, my question to the-
Well, how, how, what kind of distance are we talking about, Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't know. I, I, you know, something more than an inch.
Obviously, it can't be moved 15 feet, but-
Right, but I mean, if we can get that moved, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this. And again, these roll, you know, you put them on roll, and I get, I get, you have to probably, you have to take the electrical out and just kind of disengage it a bit and roll it another four feet.
Can't roll it. He paved it. There's a paved ramp up into the garage. You can't move-
That's a saw cut. That's a saw cut. That's all that is, is a saw cut, and, and move it. I mean, that's just a saw cut. But again, I'm just trying to help. And, and if you, if you're okay over there in the back of, let's do a, maybe what we need to do is, those Erevitees need to have a border on their side. You know what I mean?
It's not even a foot from my property line. If you need to put the plants there, they're still on my property line. It's not even a foot.
I, I could move the Erevitees onto, onto my property line by moving-
Well, a lot of them are dead.
I offered, I offered to replant them, and, and just to, to put it out there as well, I, I did to, to Mr. Fenari.
How would that be? It's not even, it's not even-
Did compliment that the Erevitees looked good.
Just talked to the board. So he, he's happy to-
Is there enough, is there enough room on the property line to put a fence going down?
I could put a-
I, 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 I find it very, it's very hard for me to tell someone.
I mean, he could, he might come to, he might come up with a fence to the, to the one side of the garage and then continue the fence from the other side of the garage.
Look, I understand what went on with the building permit, the mistakes that were made, but I, I have a very hard time telling someone that they need to move their garage or shed in this case. It, it, I understand, I understand, listen to me, I understand, but if, if this were, if the situation were reversed, if you did this by mistake, you would be in the-
People make mistakes, but you have to correct your mistakes.
I understand that. You would be in the same, you would be in the same boat. And listen, believe me, I get it. I understand 100%. He's trying to do the right thing by working with you. I don't think working with you by pushing the shed further onto the, away from your property line-
This way.
Is beneficial to anybody.
So, I, when I go to sell my home and it's not within code, what do I do? What is my inspector going to say? I'm gonna have a hard time selling my home because that is-
Well, usually you don't have homes that are out in code.
Well, it's not.
It's within a foot.
This is a shed.
It's a, it's a, it's an inch of our property.
It's a structure, large structure, within a foot, within, within an inch of my own property line. What do I do when I go to sell my home?
Well, it's not encroaching on your property though, correct? It's not on your property.
No, it's just an inch.
Well, actually, if it, if the building itself is within an inch, the, the stone gravel around it is on your property, and the trees are on your property. So it's gravel, all of it's on my property.
I, I see in the picture that you, that you have a fence in your backyard?
We have a fence, yes.
What if that fence ran the whole length of your property?
That, the fence, in the, in the rear fence in the backyard, the white fence, which is in Exhibit A in, in the plan, that I measured off of, that was put there by a previous owner of, of my home. And the folks, the, the abutting neighbors, had a wooden fence that they took down last year that was resting against that fence. So, what I'm trying to make is that fence was clearly put there by a previous owner of my home when I had drawn that, that line forward. And they had since put a fence up that connects into that fence, which my permission was not asked to do so, but that fence, again, was, was previously put there.
We're not connected to, are posts on, on your property.
Are you, are you saying that it's on her property?
We're not on his property.
No, I'm just saying that the, the white, the white rear fence, I, was, is not, was put there by a previous owner of, of my home. Just trying to make that clear that it was-
Right, but it's not on your property.
So, all of this has come up when it's finally, someone finally got something engineered. And that's why this is all up. So, let's try and correct it.
So, would you be a-
I think, I think you, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Would you be opposed to an eight-foot fence down that property and then another eight-foot fence, Kelly, shit?
I've got a 20-foot fence that I'm staring at, so let's add more weight to it. I mean, like, I walk in, Bobby, you sold me my house. You walk out my front door. Cody's house is looking at the nice side of Alex's house. My side, you know exactly where it is. I open my front door, I open my windows, I see a white wall. So you're talking about putting up an eight-foot white wall when there's already a seven-foot white wall right there.
Let me ask a question.
It's 200 feet away from the house.
How can we make the shed more aesthetically pleasant?
I mean, the-
How can we make the shed more aesthetically pleasant?
Right, so the plantings in the front, I guess, would be better.
I'm talking about the building itself.
That's what I'm saying. If you put the plantings-
Not plants, the building itself.
She said, let's let it finish.
I, I don't want the building there. I mean, if you're asking me honestly, I think that it was like a, a really poor place to put it. My house is built into a granite bench. So, I'm sorry, like, like I said before, I, I don't want to put Alex through any more stress, but like, he, he put on the application specifically what his allowances were, and they weren't correct to begin with. And he put RB, he knows it's 15 feet. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, you come to us for a variance.
I get it, I get it, I get it.
It doesn't matter the 15?
The building inspector knew it was 15 feet too, and had a plan that said 10, and issued a policy, I mean, a permit.
I wouldn't have done any of this had the permit not been issued. None of this.
Okay, this is, this is what I, this, if you can, if you can roll this shed away from that line like three or four feet, and let's get some Erevitees planted with an elevated shrub bed in the front, and I'm talking about like two or three feet. So you know what those look like? We did, actually, we did that on Silver Hill Road.
Yep.
Where we, we have a shrub bed that's elevated two or three feet by four feet wide, and then on top of that, the Erevitees. And I'm not talking about two-foot Erevitees. We made one gentleman go down that road, and they, four or six feet. We made him do six-foot Erevitees. That provided an instant correction to a problem. And everybody was okay that, with that, including the abutters for that situation. We're all trying to make this thing work. It sounds to me like you all, and Bandi Lane has always been a wonderful neighborhood.
It was.
The problem with Bandi Lane has also got a very major issue with water. And some of these homes have-
We have never had water.
Well, on one side of the street, there's some people that have, and again, major water. And that's why you have split entries, a lot of them on that side, because of the water, the high groundwater.
I don't want to be-
He's got a picture of eight feet, eight inches of water in his basement.
Yeah, I, I know, because, because I know people, I know people over there that have had nothing but water.
In the vein of trying to come to the conclusion, I understand, I mean, I, I feel bad that Alex spent all this money. I said that when I spoke earlier. I do feel bad he spent all this money. I think that he, he had an idea that maybe he's asking for forgiveness after the fact, but anyway, if he slides that, that shed over four feet, he will be able to get his car into the garage from the driveway. The whole point is never been yard equipment. Just admit that it's always been about having the car in there, because it's the only thing that's ever been there. So-
I opposed the installation from the beginning.
Yeah, so, so sliding it over, he doesn't, he's, he doesn't want to slide it over, I can tell you that, because he won't be able to get his car in the, the shed is facing the house, and it's not facing the street. He can't get his, he can't swing around and get his car in there if he moves it over five feet. That's why, it's not that we are saying-
If he winds the driveway, he can.
He just put a lamp in on the other side. He would have to hit the lamp to do it, or move the lamp. I don't know. I feel bad. I really do, but I don't, I know you don't, but I'm not next door. If I was in your position, you know, but all I'm saying is, I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor. I'm not trying to do anything, but Alex has a beautiful yard. My house is gorgeous. I put thousands of dollars into my yard. I didn't have a yard when I moved into that house. There was no yard there. It was a desert of dirt and grime. The house was a crap hole before it was flipping sold to me. So, I understand the, the value of putting a lot of time and work into your curb appeal. The shed's not curb appeal. It's just not. You know, it's, sure, it's tastefully done, it's not just his house, all these things, but you're here for people who don't have to look at it, only look out from a window or living.
And I don't, I don't even want to, to, to go down this road because it, it really is a diatribe, but I've spoken to every butter, over 25 residents, and they've all said, "You did a great job. I think it's aesthetically pleasing. I think there's no detriment to the neighborhood, the public, the traffic, any of those comments." So, I just want to-
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about this distance between, if you look at the photos, like the distance between the actual house and the structure.
I see it, yeah.
If he moves that forward, he's gonna close off that access to the back of the house, which would mean you would have to direct everything else over the drainage side of the home in order to get to the rear of the property.
He has access on the other side, plenty of access.
The concern is, you know, four feet seems to be, shut off that-
I mean, have the town put the footings over there and try to move it to the other side, facing-
The, that, four, four feet, it seems to me, might close off that, that access.
Couple of feet would be all right, though.
Steve, can I make a mo, can I make a motion that we close the hearing?
Yes, we can, we can make a motion.
I'm gonna make the motion that we close the hearing.
There's a motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by John. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, mention unanimous. So, now we have the pleasure of the board. What would you like to do? And we talked about a lot of stuff here today. Um, we've listened to the neighbors, we've listened to the director butters. I brought up a couple of suggestions that I thought would aesthetically work.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that I'd like to have the trees on Mrs. Fenari's yard ripped out. Um, I'd like to see a fence installed on the lot line, coming down on the left-hand side, and if he has to, like, like Mr. Burton� suggested, if he has to come to the corner of the-
Garage.
corner of the, the corner of the garage and then continue on the front, have a lot line and have, have a right...
Six-foot vinyl or what?
Yes, well, it's gotta be vinyl, I think it'd be more appropriate to protect the funarist view maybe, and, and then have a row of arborites...
In the front.
In the front to cover up so that...
Elevated shrub beds, you mean?
Yeah.
Evervites?
Yeah, ever, to, to make it, so, yeah, I don't know if it's, one lot of landscape would be, is it 12 inches apart or...
Yeah, there was the, yeah.
Is it 12 inches or that, yeah? I mean, I would be, I think I, from hearing everything, I think I would be comfortable.
Then you want to do six feet.
What's that?
Six footers?
Yeah, six foot, yeah.
Three feet apart, so when they grow.
See what I get?
Three feet apart.
Three feet apart.
Because when they grow.
They grow, because they're gonna, because those are gonna grow fast. All right, let me, let me kind of make sure I got this straight. So, I don't want to take this with the picture. But maybe, all right. I need the picture I want. So, so there's a, there's a motion to place a vinyl fence on the, facing, facing the property on the left side lot line from the back corner of the garage, left back corner of the garage.
No, I think it would go beyond the garage, I believe.
You want to go all the way back to the existing...
Yeah, there's, there's an existing fence, a white vinyl fence that's kind of on the left-hand side that stops...
This one here. So you want to run, you want to run it from here to the vinyl fence on the back, because that's their property?
On his property.
On his property, on, on his property.
He's running it on his property?
Yes.
Right, so he would be, all right.
Right up against the building.
So we're, against where his garage is, he will run a vinyl fence...
Towards the backyard.
Right to the backyard, so that portion of that picket fence will be removed. Okay? And the existing evervites will be removed and proper loomed and seated. And then in the front, look at that, leashed, two and a half feet high by four feet wide, and plant six-foot evervites, three feet apart.
Yeah.
Second.
That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor? Okay, so with that, ladies and gentlemen, there's a 20-day appeal period. So you have the right to appeal this decision, if you so choose, but, but I, I think from aesthetic, from an aesthetic standpoint, I don't think anybody won here, but I think we try to, we try to improve it. There's no winners.
No winners.
But I appreciate every single one of you commenting, and hopefully this can move forward. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda.
Do you want that for the...
Yeah, I'll put it in the file. Yeah, I want it for the file. Yep, thank you. Did you get those conditions? Melissa? Do you want me to give it to you so you can fill it in?
Yeah.
All right.
Could we wake you up?
Yeah, I will, I will. See you later.
They can go right to the corner of the...
He's gonna have to go right to the...
Yeah, we're still on, we're still on TV here.
Yeah.
I don't know if that, that would be, that would be acceptable. It would be acceptable if they can't...
Yeah, I can go over this with...
If they can't.
If they butt up against it.
Well, either, either or, either or, either way, you know?
This is related to two different...
Yeah, if it was.
This is, that was Kelly, but then this is related to... You're gonna have to find the, um, I'll have to find that. I'll go over it with you later. Okay. Sorry, that took a little longer. Okay, this is on the next application, 28 Grant Street. This is for anti-J circle, so the applicant for anti-J circle, please step forward. This is on the application of Kevin Tomaso, 28 Grant Street, for variance relief from sections of the U schedule of Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaws in relation to parcel of land of 19,000 plus or minus square feet. The parcel of land located on the southeastly side of anti-J circle, known and numbered as five anti-J. The variance relief is sought to permit the erection of an addition which would not be consistent with requirements of Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw. So with that, let me shoot right over to the application. Concerning the questions of what section of the zoning bylaw are they looking for relief, they're at, they're requesting to use a 15, a 15-foot required side yard, 9.5 proposed, and it looks to me like a 25-foot required from the wetlands and proposed. So according to the applicant, the, the side lot lines are at oblique angles to the front line and tapered to the rear, providing far less usable space than meets the yard requirements than a typical layout would compound, compound by the existing wetlands. Concerning the hardship, if the variance was not granted, the applicant states there would be no way to expand first and second floor living space on the property. And then concerning the, the aspect of the question, the feeling of the grant will not cause substantial detriment to the public good, the applicant proposed the encroachment is for just one corner of the addition and tapers off to two, to five and a half feet to zero over a 12-foot addition. With that, you'll see in your folder, a, a site map, you'll see the dotted line and the building envelope showing that little corner that looks like it's going over the building envelope footprint. So with that, the, the planning department did review this at their June 6 meeting, and the planning board had made a favorable recommendation. Town plan, a letter indicates that the applicant requests a side yard setback variance to allow for the construction of a 12-foot by 25-foot addition to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling on the property. The addition is, as proposed, will be 9.5 feet from the easterly side lot line. 15 feet is required in the RB zoning district and also requested as a variance from the wetland setback requirement for the existing pool that was installed previously and located 14 feet from the wetlands at 25-foot setback. So with that, although the configuration of the existing lot is generally similar to adjacent properties, the overall circular linear layout of the street resulted in the side lot line being at a 60 degree, 60-degree angle to the street line, and the building placement, however, is substantially square with the street line thus being negatively impacted and affected by the acute angle of the side lot line. Had the overall lording configuration been more conventional, the proposed addition would have easily met the 15-foot setback requirement and the variance would not have been needed. Therefore, they recommended a favorable report be sent off to this board. And with that, give us an idea of what you're doing. Sounds to me like an addition.
It is. I'm Kevin Tomaso, I'm the contractor, I'm representing Devon and Alyssa Hoy. What they're looking to do, they were contemplating moving. They run a business up at West Street, Fisher Insurance, and decided that they want to stay, it's close to their work, and decided to put money into their house. With this addition, they're looking to add to their master bedroom, walk-in closet, and a master bathroom, just to make it a little bit easier for their family. They have two teenagers, so they're not gonna be fighting over that one bathroom. There'll be a set of stairs going to the lower half, which would be a gym and an office. As you can see, looking at the lot, the house does sit, for the most part, parallel with the street, but once it gets past that, it just, the lot angles off, so it catches that corner of the addition.
Okay, there is a...
And they're also, they're also planning to put more, so they're gonna side the whole house, they're roofing the house.
So it's a complete, basically a big rehab.
Yeah, they're, yes.
I did, I did want to read into the lot, this came in, this is from the, this letter came in on a variance request to, this is to the zoning board to whom it may concern. This letter is to, is to form support by Devon and Alyssa's variance request to add an addition on the back of their home located at five anti-J circle. We have been shown the architectural plans and as neighbors directly adjacent and located at seven anti-J of Milford, we have no objection to the plans moving forward. And this was the Daniel and Jennifer Scroley.
Yes.
How do you pronounce that?
Scobill.
Boy, I really bastardized it. Sorry.
Wow, good job.
Wow.
It must be that St. Mary's education.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so with that, any comments from board members?
Do we have the plans?
By the way, did you, you've been through conservation on this?
Yep, conservation, yep.
Okay, so you've already been through that?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, we found out the, the hard way on that. We had the engineers out there and when we did the deck to the pool...
Too close.
Well, actually, on the town GPS, because there was no real issues with the setback, it, it didn't show the wetlands, so everything's permitted, but we went, we...
No, it's funny you said that, because I looked at the GIS for this for tonight and it didn't show.
Yeah.
On the GIS system.
So when land planners was out there, Betty, who was doing the surveying, she's like, you know there's wetlands there, so we, we did the due diligence.
It's the lot next to it that has most of it.
Yeah, well, we, we did the due diligence and we, we went through conservation and we actually filed for all three.
Okay.
Pool, deck, and for the addition.
Any other questions? Board members? Anybody in the audience care to be heard on this? If not, I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to approve.
Motion by John Mestrani to approve as submitted. Second?
Second.
Second by John Dagnes, all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I might be better at redoing this and better at finding something new.
Exactly. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good neighbor, thank you. Okay, and the last one on the agenda. And he's been here for...
A young guy like you?
Yeah. Good evening.
I think he's not going to Maine. All right, this is on the application of John S. Gomes and Domingos de Salves Gomes, trustees of the Gomes Realty Trust of 2005 10 Bear Hill Road. A variance and special permit relief in relation to a parcel of land located, a parcel of land containing 25,992 square feet on the northerly side of Draper Park, known and numbered as 15 Draper Park. The variance and a special permit release was sought in order to permit the division of the parcel into two parcels, Lot A, that contains 10,095 square feet and the existing single-family house and garage structure, and Lot B to contain 15,597 square feet, more or less, to be available for the two-family construction. With that, the application is normally is, Mr. Pettenary is lengthy, and I take a motion to...
I take a motion to suspend.
To suspend with the reading of this. The second? Second. All those in favor, motion to suspend with the reading as long as it's what it's, what's outlined in the application? It is? Okay, with that, all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. With that, Mr. Pettenary, please give us... Yeah, let me do the planning board. Yeah, yeah, let me do the planning. This is the, this went in front of the planning board on its June 6 hearing. Planning board recommends that the special permit be continued due to incomplete submittal materials and has made a favorable recommendation on the variance request, which is what we're dealing with tonight. The applicant requests in a combined application for frontage and with variances to allow for the subdivision of the lot and a special permit to construct a two-family dwelling on their proposed new lot. Due to the incomplete nature of the special permit aspect of this application, only the variance request can be reviewed at this time. Proposed Lot A is to have 10,099 square feet of area, 54.38 feet of frontage and 62 feet of width. Proposed Lot B is to have 15,497 square feet of area and 47.02 feet of frontage and 73 feet of width. 80 feet of width and frontage are required in the RA zoning district. The property is oversized, irregularly shaped lot lying northerly of the curve portion of Draper Park with a 33-foot wide public way. The lot generally widens beyond the relatively narrow street frontage. Therefore, they recommend a favorable report be followed to the ZBA relating to the variance request and that the special permit aspect of the application be continued to a future ZBA hearing after another planning board review. With that, Mr. Pettenary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of housekeeping matters. First one was that after consulting with Town Planner Duncan, three or four weeks ago, we made the management decision to withdraw the special permit application until such time as it could be more thoroughly reviewed. We have completed that review and the engineers have created the plan that I put in front of you this evening. You will notice that what they've basically done is they have adjusted the lot line between the two proposed lots, such that the vacant lot is now presented to you containing 16,000 plus square feet of land. That's important, because as you all know, that under 16,000 is the trigger for the duplex part of the bylaw. So we, we've withdrawn the special permit request, we're amending the plan, and we're presenting that to you this evening, and we are here to talk about the merits of the case relative to the lots themselves. Draper Park is an area of town that is probably one of the older, and in its time, one of the nicer residential neighborhoods in the community. This property, this lot, this, this house with this extraordinarily large side yard was originally referenced on the plans of the town of Milford as early as 1872. The first time anybody drew a plan of the property, the plan was never recorded, it was done in 1886. The property was owned consistently and used for residential purposes by one family from the 40s until they all passed away, and ultimately, this property was foreclosed on by the town of Milford. The Gomes brothers bought this property and are proposing to do what they've done, sometimes with your able assistance in the town of Milford, and that is to own and operate residential properties. They're proud of their record, they've done a really good job of doing what they do with their properties, and what they propose to do on this property is to continue to maintain the single-family residential structure on what is shown on that plan as Lot A. That, that lot is going to now contain 9,571 square feet, 8,000 square feet is the minimum, and construct a duplex, which would be theirs as a matter of right, on Lot B, because they were able to create the plan showing 16,000 square feet, which is the minimum required for the RA zone in a duplex. The conditions that we're here to talk about tonight are the frontage and width of the lots. As you can see, and as Larry's recommendation, very well put, these lots are oversized. Originally, when they were laid out, that was, I think, the intention, the idea being that they had a single-family residence with a half-acre play yard on the side, but nothing ever happened on this particular property from that day until this. And largely, the reason for that was because of the continuous residential occupancy of the house by one family. The conditions which affect the lot, I think, are clear and obvious. It is oversized, it's irregularly shaped. it's along a curve, which, until I really sat down with the engineers, I had and confess, I still do, have a hard time calculating frontage and width along a curve. But all of those things militate, we, we submit in favor of a variance to allow the subdivision of this into what would be two lots. There's nothing unduly ambitious about this. You'll see in the text in my memo, there are fifty-three abutting properties listed by the, the town office of assessors. Of those fifty-three, eight are not residential, but of the forty-five residential properties listed as abutters, over twenty-eight of them are on lots which do not conform, for one reason or another, to the size, setbacks, side yard, and other dimensional requirements. Many of the houses in the area of Church Street, Bancroft Park, Draper Park, all those areas up there, sit on house, sit on house lots that were laid out not long after this lot was created in the early part of the twentieth century, and those lots are between four and eight thousand square feet. So these lots that result from this subdivision are, we submit, not only comparable to any in the neighborhood, but frankly, they exceed most of the ones that are in the immediate neighborhood of the property. Again, the Gomes Brothers have been in Milford for a very long time. They do extraordinarily good work, and they are proud of their records. And, um, we're here to answer any questions you might have, but we honestly believe that this property is an appropriate one to be considered by this board for the issuance of the necessary variance relief.
Okay, great. I'll turn it over to board members, I'll start with Chris.
This is the property, the White House that was under, that the town owned with the lot next to it?
Correct.
If you're looking at it?
If you're looking at it, the house is on the left side.
Yeah, the property in the right, and did they buy the house?
Yeah, oh yeah.
The house that's existing there now, they?
Yeah, they own it now, and they, they rehabbed it as well.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Bobby?
What's that?
Mark?
I'm good.
John?
No.
Dave?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else care to be heard? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Louis Burgos. How close is that structure to my property in the, in the, in the back? I know Mr. Gomes, I've had him once, and spoke.
What's your name, sir, sorry?
Louis Burgos.
How close?
My property is, uh, the back of my property is adjacent. Oh, she has a property.
Oh, you're, oh, you're pretty far away, okay. Do you want to come over?
Let me come up and look at it.
Sorry.
There's a big pine trees in the back, and I'm just concerned, sorry about that. I'm just concerned, yeah, that if any, any of them fell, I mean.
This is, the house is way over.
I mean, these are sixty-foot tall pine trees, and they're gonna put a fence along here, um, I just have, you know.
Probably, probably just keep it as natural as they can. Are there pine trees on this now?
The, the lot is, is fairly heavily vegetated. They're going to clean it up, but I don't think I can commit to removing any particular trees, right?
No, they're, they're not.
Well, you've already taken down one of the pine trees on your property.
Yeah, because some trees are dangerous, they, they too tall, they dangerous.
And all I'm saying is that.
Yeah, pine trees have very shallow roots.
Yeah, like, I wouldn't even mind splitting the cost to take down some of those pine trees, especially if it's a storm.
No, like, you have one in the back of the garage, you, that's very dangerous.
That's not the only one, there's.
The thing splits.
We'd like to look at them with you and maybe come up with a, a program through which you share the cost of removing. You don't have an objection to that?
No, we, we like to take them down.
Yeah, so that's.
Okay, so where do you think these trees are? Right, on your property?
They're right on the property.
Oh, they're on the line?
They're right on the line.
Well, they're gonna be dangerous to your house, and they're no.
They're in the, I mean, like, up, you know, I mean, the trees. We already took it down.
Okay.
And then the.
Why don't we do this?
But you'd be willing to work with him?
Well, whatever, yes.
Alright, so why don't we do this? Will you two trade each other's phone numbers when you leave?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. Alright, super.
Not a problem, not a problem, you know.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have questions?
Uh, yeah, my name's Emily Austin, um, I think I'm directly flooding his house, um, and.
On the other side?
Uh, the backyards, so the backs of our houses face each other.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, God, you'll never see it.
Well, I hear a lot of it, so I heard the trees and stuff. I just have a couple of questions about the process, because I'm, I'm new to this. So I'm curious about kind of how neighbors are alerted to any kind of construction process, if at all?
You're not.
We're not, okay.
So let me, let me, they, they still have to go down the road and get a full building permit. Once you start seeing a heavy piece of equipment on the property, you're gonna hear noise.
So I'm also curious, because there's construction on the other side of West Street from where I am.
The state stuff of?
Well, I, I know what she's talking about, because I travel that road frequently. They're tearing up all the side streets.
Putting gas lines in.
From the boardhouses all the way down to Exchange Street.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. I think it was an old funeral home, maybe?
Oh, that's a Kelso.
That's almost done now.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and we've just, we've just picking up, like, insulation out of our yard.
You mean, like, it's blowing?
Yeah, they just, they don't keep a clean site, so I'm just curious, because there's a lot of kids who play in Draper Park, I walk my dog over there a lot, so I'm just curious.
Well, they'll have, they'll have a dumpster on the site for any type of debris?
And, uh, we fixed the house, he's over there now, the house we bought it. We cleaned a lot of mess over there, you know, then, no neighbors came over here complaining.
These are one of the guys you may not have to have.
You're getting the impression they're very proud of what they've done.
Very proud. The people walking by, they said, you guys did an awesome job, the, you know, the neighborhoods are bent, all bushes. We spent about ten thousand, we spent about ten thousand dollars just cleaning the mess the people dump over there.
Alright, well, do me a favor.
I just have one other question, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Mr. Chairman. We don't call them that.
Exactly.
So it sounds like there's a lot of due diligence that's happened surrounding the abutting properties. You have a lot of the zoning all sorted out, and I'm curious if you've also done research into how many of those abutting properties are multifamily versus single-family? And if the town has any type of, um, like, saturation or, um.
The affordable component, we, we have not hit the, we have not hit the, um, we're close to the ten percent on the forty, forty B affordable component.
Okay.
So, we're not there yet, but we're close, um, from that perspective. I believe these, these will be half duplexes. I'm sure they could be sold as half-single-family homes at some point in the future, or knowing these gentlemen, they run a very tight ship and clean ship, and they, they're proud of their properties. I would strongly suggest that you, you trade phone numbers, because if you have an issue, they'll take care of it.
Definitely.
But to answer your question, there is no readily available
Right.
website materials that tell you how many houses are single or multi. So I'll tell you what I did. I took the list of the abutters, and then I went to the assessor's field cards. And in this particular instance, the vast majority of houses are more two, three, and four family that were abutted, listed among the fifteen.
Yeah, the abutters on that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go to a site called Milford MAGIS. And when you, you click on a property address there, you can actually get all the abutters, property information all around that.
You can pull the field cards up, and I'll type the single family.
Multi-family, whatever.
Milford MAGIS?
Milford MA dot GIS.
The only thing I'd like to add, just for the record, we're talking about variances from the frontage and width.
Correct.
And I want to make sure that everybody is aware that when you're talking about a two-family home in the RA zone, the variance is from the standard of one hundred and two.
Correct.
Just, I want to say that.
Yeah, and your lot sizes are changing now, too, with the plan you just submitted.
Well, the lot sizes are changing, but nothing else has changed, because the, the point of contact with the park was maintained, and all they did was they shifted the lot line, and I'm surprised.
So you're, you're getting variance based on frontage and width on Lot A and B?
Correct, because both need it, correct. And that's the interesting part about this. That's probably one of the older houses in the town of Milford. And it could not be sold without that side yard, which would be kind of silly. And if you put it all together and ripped it all down, you'd have three-quarters of an acre, and then you could be talking about doing subdivision.
Anyway, was that Dylan's old home?
It was, it, it really was. And, and again, I say that because you and I are probably aged, but nobody knows who he was, but he lived with his sister there, if you remember.
She worked at the State Theater.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Okay, anybody else care to be heard?
I'm making a motion that we approve.
A motion by David, approve Lot A for frontage and width variance, Lot B for frontage and width variance. There's a second. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion by Mark to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.